I would like to call this meeting the Town and Land Planning Board Order. I believe that the agenda stands as posted. And there's Sunday, April 4th, and we have our last meeting approved, our regular minutes of March 4th. And our workshop minutes are January 22nd. And then we go read them, so the event will be given, whether it will be approved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. And we have our first public hearing in a couple of minutes. What I'd like to do now is we have a time extension request. It's for Richard McKay from the Upper Hook Road approval site plan special use proof for the home he's building upstairs. And he needed more time to complete all his approvals from other agencies to get the site plan to be approved. So he's requested, and it's a timely request for a six-month extension on the expiration of his approvals, special use plan and site plan. Could I have your motion to approve?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Did you do the meeting notes, Michael?
Yeah.
And could I have your motion? Could I have your motion to approve Jim's meeting notes?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I have nothing more. I could say he needs a jury at the pool, but I guess that would be a little gross, or... Oh, yes, we had a meeting in the zoning review subcommittee today. And we're moving along swimmingly. There are a number of issues we're trying to deal with. And as far as the planning board, if you come up with ideas, things you can do with that, please bring them up to us. We're looking at definitions, we're trying to get some contradictions getting here. We are having a review and dealing with accessory structures, definitions, they've been somewhat of a problem. Something that I think is all been somewhat concerned about, we're going to try to put this into the law, is develop expiration limits for planning board applications, so projects don't go on forever. We do have expirations on when approvals expire, but we've never had anything in there specific that we've been comfortably using about when something has gone on for year after year and there's been no action on it. Is there some way that it can just time a little bit each time? So we're working on that. We're just going to be looking at the solar farm one, as you may know, the ZDA upheld Michelle's determination that roof mounted solar, commercial metered solar, solar farms do require screen. And with the town, the board has asked us to look into that regulation. We had a good discussion about it today. I think we're trying to think in terms of what we might call visual impact mitigation, how we might deal with that for projects of that sort. We're also going to be going along, we're starting the 9 and 9G corridor. We have a couple of things being proposed for there, as you know, the roofies zoning amendment. We use the stamp site, the ORP area for servicing, automobile servicing. The board will be coming back to us soon if we can get an application to expand their facility there. And there are a couple of other people who have discussed interest in different properties up and down the corridor, things that I'd like to discuss. It's something that they were going to be working on. And we have quite a list of other items too that will be coming up, that we're working on as well. But I would remind you, if you have things that you feel that we need to be looking at, that in a way are precise or somewhat opaque, need to be clarified, things that haven't been put in, that should be definitions, that you've wondered why we don't find something that we use, bring it to our attention and we'll put it on the agenda. Having said all that, does anyone else have anything to add?
Yes. You and I have been talking this morning, and I asked you if you were giving out pay raises tonight.
Yes, I do. It's 50% across the board.
I thought 100%.
For the public, we don't get any wages in law.
I fought for it, Eric, I fought for it, but they told me that was excessive and extreme.
As long as you're there by the board, I'd like to appreciate that.
You know, I do my best. You see how far I get?
And it shows.
You see how far I get? Alright. I think by, yeah, pretty much, okay, we're ready. Okay, we have one public hearing tonight. And it is Peter and Catherine Churetko, 383 Morton Road, site plan approval for a covered walkway and greenhouse on that property. If you could explain to the public exactly what you all have in mind.
Alright, thank you. Peter and I purchased the house at 383 Morton Road, which was originally a one room schoolhouse, in 2012. And embarked upon a fairly large renovation in 2014 for our use as a part-time residence. We were still full-time residents in New York. In 2017, we moved up here full-time. And one of the things that we discovered during, in here full-time in the winter, was that having an exposed walkway between the garage and the house became a little bit unpleasant, as it rained and snowed a lot more than we had recognized during our part-time. So we are proposing to have a covered walkway, which will be connected to our existing garage, that will come close to our open porch in the front of the house. So that will be the first part of the project. The second part of the project is to add to the back of the existing garage, a short breezeway and a greenhouse solarium, which will also function as a three-season art studio for Peter painting and drawing, et cetera. So that's the general gist of the project. And Peter will take you through a little bit of the materials. We have spoken with the board and members of the board several times about this, and the design has evolved such that we're quite happy with the way that it interacts with the house and the site, but also will provide cover as we're carrying on groceries. Thanks.
Thank you, Catherine.
Tiny thank you. A little bit of the numbers would explain the size of these things. The covered walkway, which is unenclosed, is six feet wide and 334 square feet. It, in addition to being covered during storms and everything, people have said to us, "Well, that's a breezeway." And it will make the area, the little court that we're making in there, of core and will provide a little cause for recess to come through. This is what happens when you put an object in front of another object. The covered walkway is constructed of wood posts that go four feet into the ground appropriately by two minutes, et cetera, to prevent them from not being appropriate for the moisture of the ground. In the back, the, could we have the picture of the greenhouse? This is an image of the greenhouse. Well, you can see its relationship to the garage. It follows through. It's consistent with the garage's kind of foundation. It's 10 feet six high, it's almost a cube. It's passive. We talked about this in our earlier presentation, that the one wall at the north is going to be black. And that will allow you to be there three seasons. And it is what is called a tron wall, most engineers will wonder what that means. And this is what Catherine was mentioning here. The most salient feature of the construction of this is that it's going to have a bluestone floor. And the greenhouse is 132 square feet. That is enclosed. And that's the way that will work. Our latest thinking on this is that they will be sliding doors, two sets of five feet by 68, five feet by 68. Those are the facts. Do you want to go to the colored version of the greenhouse? That's a left to right. The detailing on the posts is similar in small detail to the detailing on the house. It doesn't touch the house. And from the point of view of categorizing this thing, we have the one building, which is a house, the second building, which is the garage. And now the enhanced garage, which is extensions, are as we have just spoken about. I'm more than happy to take a question, but, yeah.
You mentioned the sliding doors, I didn't quite understand where those would be.
Well, if you go back to that picture of the... Those are six foot eight high, sliding windows, doors, what have you.
They're going to remain windows?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And...
So they just pop a little window there?
Yes. They will allow many, many ways of opening and closing the windows, so that you have this little or no breeze whatsoever. And we also have an overhead electrical fixture that will allow for a fan when we decide that we want to put our headpiece there. So that's the way that it works. And I thank you again for your question.
Okay, I think Sharon, who can we share into this like this?
Sharon and myself.
Would you care if you'd be here, if you were to deal with this?
Yeah, I see no effect to any visual views of the structure. I think it's very fitting. And interestingly, when you stand in front of the garage and look, you don't even see the greenhouse on the driveway. It's completely covered, hidden, if that's all right. You have to be on either Mill Road or way down on Morton Road to even get a slight glimpse of it. I think it's an excellent thing, I see no problem from the planning board staying forty feet tall.
And Sharon couldn't be here tonight, but I do have her comments. The roof on the existing walkway from the garage to the house makes sense in this climate and does not detract from the historical schoolhouse or the view from the road. The small greenhouse solarium addition attached to the rear of the existing garage is also a nice addition that will enhance the use of the property by the owners. Do we have, are we starting Nancy? Nancy? Will you run with you?
The confirmation of the lodge.
Yes.
Yes, as a town historian, I just wanted to point out that this is a very significant building in line back and that it was designed by A.J. Davis, who was an important architect. And that it was designed in 1842 as a result of financing by Mary Garrison. So we are very thankful that you always are sympathetic to the design and the idea that we don't want to block the significant features, this architect's features of the building, not that this walkway will enhance their enjoyment of the property. And so I think it's a good thing for us.
Thank you, Nancy. C.A.D.W.A.C.
Hi, Nancy Richard for the C.A.D. I attended the site visit. And we reviewed this project for consistency with the LWRP, the Hudson River Historic Life Marks District, and the scenic road designations. We found no issue with any of them. We found them consistent with those programs. And we found it sensitively done and designed and will enhance the property.
Thank you. Do you members of the board have any further questions for the afternoon? And the members of the public have comments or questions? When we came here, the notice was type 2 under secret, therefore the secret, higher motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. And I have a resolution treaty. The Town and Land Planning Board requires as follows on the application of Peter and Catherine Churetko, the site plan approval under Town Code Chapter 125, that 383 Morton Road is in the RC RA10, not the original district. Any other questions? In the application for site plan prepared by Peter W. Churetko, architect, dated January 29, 2019. One, the reaffirming of that is type 2 under secret, which voidage of environmental quality was included. It's planned to yield submitted information to the community of planning board members on the subject of this project property to town story, ship all the C.A.D.W.A.C. members. Plans to propose that is consistent with the objectives stated in Chapter 125. For the purposes of documenting, the Reverend finds the proposed project consistent with existing principal structure, which the covered walkway located as an addition or as an accessory structure, attached garage, which is covered walkway located as an addition. In respect of the application for site plan approval, we find that the proposed proof and intent to use be consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-72, when approved the act of commission, inclusive of the site plan grid, by Peter W. Churetko, architect, dated January 29, 2019. Meeting will authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign above site plan by the effort of satisfaction of the local conditions and the requirements within six calendar months of the April 1st, 2019 adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited set plan and the form and numbers specified within Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-78B, except as may be modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements, including thereon all required stamps, seals, and certifications. May be given outstanding fees and reversible amounts due to town private related review process of applications subject to this resolution. Could I have your motion to approve?
Aye.
A second? Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
I will hold the board. Catherine? Winnie?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Melody? And I vote aye.
Go build.
You're approved.
Excellent.
All we need now is just submit the final site plan and whatnot, so I can stamp and sign, and then we can go and get building. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That was our public hearing for tonight. Our next presentation is going next door, Sucee from Grinnell Street, site plan review and approval, and special use permit, removed garage study, and replacement greenhouse.
Good evening, my name is Sucee, and I live at 23 Grinnell Street. This is a property right now, next door to my property. And there's a small existing studio that just has electricity that is on the riverside of the street. And it was formerly a garage, and they converted it to a studio, I believe in the 80s.
Well, as far as I can tell from the accessories, it was 73, it's shown as a garage, and then 2000, it's shown as a studio. So this is the main house, and this is Grinnell Street, and this is the little structure of questions.
So what I would like to do is use more or less the same footprint and convert it into a greenhouse. I would not use the existing structure, I would move the existing structure some, off-site somewhere, and rebuild in the same footprint, except for a little bays that sticks out on the south side.
Nice looking greenhouse.
Thank you. So it basically has a stone base, and then all glass above, with probably a metal frame construction.
Say all glass?
Yes.
What kind of glass?
That's to be determined. I still have to have a greenhouse designer to engage with.
Will it be heated?
I will heat it, probably with a kind of a unit. I'm not sure yet. But yes, it will be heated.
Electric or propane, something like that?
Probably electric, because I'm getting, I'm part of the solar CSA, so...
Look, if, you know, by my sense, if you use unvented propane, you'll get the benefit of the heat and also the extra CO2.
We might consider that. It's not, it's not been settled yet, so we will look into that.
It's, I don't know, this is just going to be for a greenhouse, for roaming purposes, correct?
Yes.
Because glazing, overhead glazing, you see, required to have wired glass, is for roaming purposes.
Yes, it will be to code for the structure.
Other questions for the afternoon? Do you have any?
I just had one I did want to bring up. It looked like, I couldn't tell what the existing height and the existing structure is on the site, but it looks like this one's going to be a bit higher. And when I took a look at the location of it on the site, pretty close to the road, I was just concerned we might be getting close to the overhead wires. And it was not going to touch them, or within a few feet, I didn't know if we needed to get some pinging on that to make sure we don't have any issues if we get close to the overhead wires or not.
We're actually lowering the sole plate, the head height of the, you know, where the roof meets the top plate, right here. So this is not, I, we should be really close.
Is this a custom-built greenhouse?
Yes, it will be.
So it'll be close to the existing height, what's on the site now?
We're trying to get it to be as low as possible and have a nicer pitch.
We would think we would like the pitch to match the buildings directly across the street, 19 Grinnell Street. I'll have pictures out for the next.
It's not as bad, I'm only, I wasn't sure if that was an issue when it ends up working or not, but I think we mean...
My obstruction of power line could be unpleasant, and there's a lot of water to the site.
There is water to the same parcel, there's a frost-free height there.
So just a quick question, Jim, can you say that the power, is the power lines in it closer, or is it the cable line in it closer? The power line usually is at the top of the poles.
Yeah, I'd have to check and see which one.
It'd be unlikely that it would be high enough with a power line.
True. It's close to a gate like cable, so that's one of the lines.
And that's really not a real danger. But is there a reason for it to be as high as it is?
As I said, it was the pitch, and we were trying to match the pitch of the house that it belongs to. And...
So it's not because you grow banana trees and that, or something?
No. It's better for smaller...
Any other questions?
I have one question. It's completely nothing to do with this, but why, why girl next door? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I want to know that too.
Well, you know, when you do an L, so you have to have a name. And it came to mind, because I do live next door.
Yeah. We can put some bamboo in there too, like you have in front of the house.
Yeah, I've had my chair there.
It's kind of, I see in your yard.
Anything else? Okay, I have a resolution. The Town and Land Planning Board requires as follows on the application by Sucee, you are next door to site plan approval, special use permit, approval. Respectively, a 239 straight line with... We accept the application supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board's advisors and public. We are classifying the proposed actions as type 2, action near secret, which orbiting environmental quality was included. We're skipping the public hearing on the application for May 6th and...
6/35.
6/35. And direct to undertake or otherwise cause noticing, both given their open points to the department set forth under Town Code Chapter 85. We are delegating planning board members...
Aye.
Eric? And I'll go.
I'd like a nice group of you.
To conduct a field visit to a project site and report for observation at the time of public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and brief comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 118, Waterfront Consistency Review, refer the application to the Waterfront Advisory Committee for review and brief comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. In accordance with Dutchess County Program of Planning and Development, 239 zoning plan infer, refer the application to the Dutchess County Program of Development Review. And we authorize without prejudice to any information or comment made in present at the public hearing on May 12th, on both the above cited field visit and the trails. Preparation of a working draft and approval of this resolution for the planning board's consideration on May 6th. We will adjourn the meeting. Do you have a two proof?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
We will get in touch with you about the site.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Okay. Our next, the Children's Medical Group, 50th Road, site plan review and approval, convert the dance studio to a medical office.
Chairman, the week is, we have a presentation on the laptop, looking to your...
My technical assistance is sad, right? Thank you.
Steve, thank you for allowing us to present this project. On behalf of the Children's Medical Group, Mr. Pinkman Architecture, and with me is Chris Mansfield. The project before you is a repurposing of the existing building on Wood Road, 50th Road. It, I think its last use was as a dance studio. And it's been vacant for a bit. Our plan is to repurpose the building, and it's a complete interior and exterior improvement to put the children's medical practice in this building. They currently are in right-back, they've outgrown their existing facility. And so the purpose of this is to allow them to operate at the scale they need to operate and, you know, provide better and more modern services and serve the community better. The project, as I mentioned, is a complete rehabilitation of the inside of the building. So what's there now will be completely taken apart and will be replanned so that it will function appropriately for, you know, for the doctors. There are two minor exterior additions to the property. You can see this is the front of the structure from Wood Road. We, this is basic south. We're looking to, you know, put a small addition that will, one, allow for an appropriate entrance. There's a covered walkway that gets you to a vestibule, and then an enlarged sitting area, you know, for patients that are waiting or family members and such. And we want to bring some more natural light into the face... And we want to bring some more natural light into the face of the building. There is going to be a small second addition, which, there's a loading dock that's currently in the back that you can see in the darker color, and that's just going to be enclosed so that we can have an additional space for HVAC equipment. Other than that, the building itself on the outside will be recolored, just to, you know, update it, you know, it needs a refresh, and so that's the plan. There are no other changes that are proposed, except for this small yard that we'd like to present this as an option. The doctors haven't committed to it yet, but the conversation has been such that they want to create an outdoor play area for their patients, which seems like a really terrific idea. And it just, if we need to come back before you, we can do that. It's proposed to be in this area here, but the details have yet to be all worked through at this point in time. The project involves the reuse of the existing utilities that are on the site and that serve the building, the park, including the, you know, all the, you know, the septic and well, and then there's also reusing of the existing, you know, mechanical on there. So no changes in that regard in terms of the size or the amount of blacktop that's currently on the site. The last piece is that we'd like to do a small sign on the road to identify using the Practices logo. We have some stone, and it matches the stone that we're using, it's a small column on the front of the building that you can see, again, at, you know, at the entrance. And that's pretty much the project.
I just have two questions off the top of my head. What sort of lighting is going to happen? Shouldn't there be some lighting down the building, possibly through the parking area, things like that? What type of lighting? I mean, you need full cutoff, but if you could sort of give us some idea of what sort of lighting planning you have for the building, this exterior lighting.
So right now, the proposal shows the existing light fixtures to remain with new lights, new bolts, which are spec in the drawings. In addition, we have proposed two new exterior lights. Those are two recessed cam lights that would be under this canopy, directly over the signage, and in the drawings there, there's a spec for the cowling and all that. We did relook at one existing light as well.
And your full cutoff plan lights?
Full cutoff, yeah.
And the don't lighting in the parking area? I'm sorry? Don't lighting in the parking area?
It's not proposed at this time. There's, it seems that from the existing lights on the building, so we didn't want to overlight the site. We also heard in our preliminary meeting about being careful about pollution, night pollution and such, so that's where we use the recessed fixtures, you know, again, to create a little bit of warmth from the street, you know, from that. And there might be some night lighting in the building itself, there's some glass in the front, so you could get a little bit of light in it, so minimal.
Typically, they're at hours of operation in the evening.
No, no. If in fact that changes, we'd have to come back to you for night lighting.
What sign do you have?
It's proposed to be lit up.
Yeah, there's lights for the monumental side, some ground lights in there, which are as well, they can shut up towards the, towards the monumental side of the street.
I think that, I think our requirement is to keep the day out, that it should be down there on the sign as opposed to up there.
Okay.
If you can sort of take a look at that and how you might do that, like, see what you want to put on your sign.
I can do some, or something.
Yeah, something on the way, something. The other thing that just struck my attention is that the Grove is a scenic road, and screening is often required for commercial uses along the scenic road. And I noticed that, I think there are a couple of trees on the property existing on the top of the now, which I'm assuming are going to stay. Is there any thought of maybe a little more screening along the front of the property just to sort of soften the parents of it, for the, you know, people across the street, the residential, these many trees, something like that, just to sort of break up the, just sort of visual, their ability, sort of thing?
Yeah, I'm not good at a flippant answer, and if that's a request of the board, we can go back and see what a thoughtful addition to that might be, so.
I think that would be helpful.
This is a lot of use, obviously, right? What is the district?
It's, is it Business Park? It is a commercial district, but outside of the Grove. Outside is, is a, and across the street is residential, so that's why, the screening is required, it's sort of.
Where is their practice now?
Their practice is on.
It's out by Wonderland, in the brick building on the left, just below.
So that question should run with the time. Hearing, I have a resolution. Jim, did you have anything you want to add?
I think we covered most of it. I think the only questions I had for the board were just, you know, there's a fence shown for the children's play area, which I think, you know, makes sense if you're going to have the kids out there playing. That will be visible, you know, from the road, because it's on, it's on the side of the building as you're looking at it from the road. If you're talking about screening along the road, that might help, to seem like the plans were showing pretty good. Off the earth fence, maybe than we've seen in past, maybe something a little more immense that might work. Depending on type of screening, screening design, I don't know what we're looking for, but obviously I understand if it's a kids' play area, there are certain elements they want that there. But I was just going to raise that as one idea. And then the other one is just the septic field area that you showed. Is there just going to be field verified? Is there still a little bit more work to do related to septic? Do you have to get, can you help? Has it had some use in a while? How's the septic and that working?
So we're working with a local civil engineer on that now. The field's been located, and the septic's been opened up there, scheduled to pump the tanks this week, I believe, and they're going to do, you know, camera inspections on all the systems. Civil's working with the Department of Health.
So we'll need, we will need full, you know, confirmation from the Department of Health or full approval from them.
Do you think a well is on site?
It is, yes.
Okay, well, here we go. Towne Board, Planning Board, who are access follows on the application by Hudson Valley Country LLC. Roger, Wayne, and Brian Engel.
That's the next one? That's actually.
One more.
Uh-oh.
I'll take it though.
Hold the phone.
My list can save too.
All right, let's try this one more time. I think we're going to go good too, so not to worry. The Towne Board, Planning Board, who are access follows on the application by Children's Medical Group, the site plan approved under Towne Code Chapter 125 within BP Business Park Zoning District, including local water, construction area, and also river, stroke, landmarks district, and voting on the seat of road, five North. We accept the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board, its advisors and public. We classify proposed actions as type two wonder seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is included. We schedule a public hearing for May 6th at?
Six forty.
Six forty. And direct trip to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting their records with requirements set forth under Towne Code Chapter 125. We delegate the planning board members?
Aldo.
Who said that?
Edna.
Edna? Okay. Who's going with Edna?
I'll take it.
Woody. To conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with Towne Code Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comments concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Towne Code Chapter 118 Waterfront Consistency Review, refer the application to the Waterfront Advisory Committee for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. And in accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. And we authorize without prejudice to any information or comment may be presented at the public hearing and may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral. Preparation of a working draft and approval of resolution for the planning board's consideration on May 6th or as may be made kindly. Could I have also to approve?
Aye.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? What you want to do is get in touch with Edna and Woody about this, because we decide this?
Do you expect comments back from all the different agencies and boards that you listed in the resolution by the?
Yes.
May 6th?
Right, they have to pay up to thirty days, and usually they'll go quicker than that.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Oh, hey. No, no, no. My glasses are right behind me. Oh, hey. Hudson Valley Country LLC. Gwen and Engel, hope I got that right? Twenty-eight Mont Rudson Road, site plan approved, approval, renovation of existing scenic family lawn.
What is that?
Have any open, okay?
Yeah, which one would you like?
Oh, which one would you like? Well, I'd hear.
There are lots.
As you're cycling? Very small, but, yeah. But the per sheet is fine, actually, there. Make your back. Here we are. Good evening, I'm Warren Smith, representing Roger One and Brian Engel, who purchased this house on Mount Rudson Road, and as he was vacant for a long time, and during the course of its vacancy, I think all the copper was stripped out and all the usual things that were done to vacant houses. It's kind of an interesting house. There were a number of houses built in this strip of Mount Rudson Road, maybe in the seventies, and if you look at the zoning map, this strip of parcels is actually excluded from the landmark district, it's surrounded by the landmark district, but this strip is not. So the reason this application is before the planning board is because it is adjacent to the landmark district, and it's also on a scenic road. So those are two things that sort of brought it in. We're not, we're not touching wetlands behind us, we're doing anything else. So what, the intent is, is to renovate the house primarily internally, but there are two modest changes proposed to the exterior, one being replacement for the existing front porch, and the other being in the back. At some point, I think there was a deck which was missing, so we're kind of putting a deck back in the back. There'll be some new windows, some other changes to try to enhance that popular mid-century modern aesthetic that all ranch houses sort of derived from, but many lost along the way. We can sort of look back to Frank Lloyd Wright and his successors as the international movement. But again, there are very modest changes proposed to the house. If you are traveling north on Mount Hudson Road, it's almost impossible to see this house. It's just beyond the house, it's a daycare center, and there's quite a large berm, and there are a couple of Adarana chairs sitting up there, but you almost can't see the house except the roof. When you're traveling south, you pretty much just look in the driveway and see the garage, which is of course where these houses were always entered. That there's even a pedestrian door between the two overhead doors. There is a front door that's a little inaccessible right now with the existing front porch, and the hope is to make it a little more accessible than actual steps that lead up to it, and again, a slightly revised front porch. But the others may welcome in, the back door, and, you know, you stare into the deck, as many people do if they're going to the kitchen. So anyway, that's the site. We're not, we're not getting within the required setbacks front side from anything with either the new front porch or rear deck. And again, the reason it's before you is because of the scenic road designation for Mount Rudson Road and the fact that we're adjacent to the landmark district. If you want to cycle through the images like this, you know, aggressive, so, yeah, the front porch is simply replacing an existing sort of, somewhat inappropriate front porch for back, you'll never see. There are more windows and larger windows than there were originally, you know, there can always have the remaining bedroom windows you can always look at it depending on the chair. But, so we're trying to improve the house in many ways to go on to the next image. Just kind of showing some details of the deck and so forth. Go further, I'm not sure what I provided you with submission. Just a random looking at the end of the house from the driveway, like it'll never be this close unless you're actually in the driveway. This is sort of a more breaking view of the front, which you could potentially see if you were up in the lawn, you're southbound, lawn, Mount Rudson, with the front porch and then the back view that looks out toward the area behind, it's kind of a place I would lay in that behind the house. And I think there were a number of supporting documents just showing the wetlands and the, the application itself and so forth and so on. Yeah, this shows both, you know, the wetlands, the turistic and also flood plains that we are not within any of the properties here. We're not touching them, we're not disturbing. It's in the national weapons inventory, and the watch is here. All the good stuff, you can sort of tear it out online. So what pops up says bats listed as endangered or threatened could be an area. We're not disturbing any trees in the property, and that would be the bat habitat. So there's no reason to think that we're going to chase away any bats if they were there. That shows the adjacent wetland and the verge of wetland, but again, we're not doing anything that disturbs either the weapon or the buffer. Maybe about it. It'd be, I think it's one of the questions. One of the margins. So that's the, basically what the proposal is?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
Well, I'd just want to say, I want to thank you and the owner for taking this project down, and you for applying your considerable skills to making this. That house.
So that's, that's true. The owners with their vision, right?
Yeah, it's very good. I'm pleased to see that.
Thanks.
Other questions are, are there at this point?
One. Are you putting satellites in the house?
Propose for some of those small solar troop skylights, just to bring some light down into interior areas, but not the big flat ones that sit on the roof.
They were visible on the air elevation?
I think they were. Yes, yes. Well, oh, that's right, that's the kitchen. Kitchen, I'm sorry, I take that back, great. In the kitchen area, there are a couple of skylights, thank you.
This is the side facing the woods?
This faces the woods, this is accurate.
So none of this is seen?
None, this is not seen.
All right.
You would have to be in the woods or trespassing the property.
That's it.
Right, this is what you see looking through it.
The only comment I had, I didn't see any details on external lighting fixtures, so just would like to see like a cut of what you want to use in the external lighting, if you have any, make sure it's qualifying, down lighting, that kind of thing.
Right, I think the front porch would have something in the ceiling, but we can include that information for the next meeting.
Those the colors were?
You know, we're somewhat limited by what the renderers could show. There is an area of bascery in the middle of the house, and I think that Roger and Brian were told certainly whether they want to keep that as is. Obviously, it's less likely to leave it alone and then try to, try to work with something that's going to work with that color. But I think that's essentially the palette we're talking about, nothing radically different than that.
All right then. It's time, sure. The Towne Board, Planning Board, who are access follows on the application by Hudson Valley Country LLC, for site plan approval under Towne Code Chapter 125. Accept the application supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board, its advisors and public. We classify proposed actions as type two wonder seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is included, and we schedule a public hearing for May 6th at?
Six forty-five.
At six forty-five. And direct trip to undertake or otherwise cause noticing, posting their records with requirements set forth under Towne Code Chapter 125. And planning board members?
Aldo.
Alder.
Kathy. Eric. To conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with Towne Code Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors, including assessment of building site buffers. Six in accordance with Towne Code Chapter 118 Waterfront Consistency Review, refer the application to the Waterfront Project Committee for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. In accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning, refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. And authorize without prejudice to any information or comment may be presented at the public hearing and may arise based on both the above cited field visits and referral. Preparation of a working draft and approval of the working draft. and referral preparation of a working draft and approval resolution for the planning board's consideration on May 6th or as may be later timely. Can I hear motion to approve?
Approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I think Kathy and Eric set the second list.
Very good.
Okay. Last but not least, we have Brian and Susan Rowan by Orchard Drive, Site Plan of Approval and替换 Existing Environment Shed and Same Footprint.
Give you the survey first. Yes, test it out. Okay, so I'm still Warren Smith. And this time I'm representing Brian and Susan Rowan. Neither of whom is here this evening. But they have this particularly charming little English-style house at the corner of Corning and Orchard in Hamlet of Rockwood. Sort of a beige hand color with very interesting vergeboards going up the gables. And so the house is quite charming. It is on the National Register, as you would expect. Behind the house is a wooden, what a barn or shed, which is not in very good condition, which is not listed in the National Register, not even acknowledged in fact in the listing for how this, when the documentation from the landmark district was presented. So it's hard to know exactly how old it was. You know, there's no mention of an earlier structure or anything else. It sits very close to the property line, as is true of many things in the Hamlet, both to Corning Street and to a garage that'd be deeply adjacent to it. And below it, as Corning Street goes downhill toward the river. And what Brian and Susan would like to do is replace that structure, which again is either charming or in very good condition, with a structure in the same footprint. I'm dubious if the foundation can be reused because I, until we take down what's there, we'll see how deep it is and whether it's salvageable. If it is salvageable or we can reinforce it, we'll use it. Otherwise, we would replace the foundation and build a structure in the same footprint. The only difference is it would be a little taller. The roof would be a little taller than it is now. So right now, it's a single-story structure with stairs up to a loft area that you could stand in the middle. The thought is to raise the walls and keep at the roof a little more to be closer to the, the actual gable profile of the house itself, which as Sookie was talking earlier about the greenhouse replacement there on the river. So it would emulate the house a little more and give a little more usable room upstairs. So that's the purpose of this. It will purely be a workshop on the ground story. And it's a space upstairs, not intended to be heated. It's not intended, there will be no water or there any other type of utility in the building. There'll be light, obviously. But it's just undesignated space. And right now, limitations aside from the tiny small lot of 0.082 acres, the septic system sits between the house and the barn. And you can see there's really no other place. So anyway, it is a typical Rockwood challenge. And so again, we're working with the existing footprint and just trying to put a better structure in place.
Do you have any elevations?
We do, yes. So that's the survey, which has a location in the building. This is a plan of the building. So the first floor, there is an existing sliding barn door that we think we can sell, which from the existing structure can reuse and new one. And then there's a stair that goes up roughly the same location. On the second floor, there's still not terrific headroom. You have, at least with a cross gable, you'll have a somewhat larger area. This represents the eight-foot height. And of course, it slopes down to about six here in lower leaves. And then the thought is to have a door with a little balcony at the back. So if somebody wants to stand and then look out at the river, they can do that.
So the whole thing is about three, four hundred square feet? Use a little bit?
Yeah, this schematic doesn't have dimensions on it.
Let's see, 16'5" and 22'5".
Maybe it does, I just can't read it.
On the other door.
Oh, right, because they're over, right, so right. The first floor, basically the overall is 15 and a half by 21'4". So the outside dimensions are at 16'6" by 22'4".
Is that going to be on a sway of which direction?
No crawl space. It would be just that, yes. And then there are some renderings as well. Cross sections, cross sections. So we're proposing to use board and vatten. I think what's right down there is mostly plywood. There may be some vertical boards on it too, but board and vatten. And again, steeper roof pitch. So the E's really aren't changing. As I say, there is a sliding door here, but the roof pitch is going up. So the ultimate roof height is actually, this is the existing roof peak. The new one would be six feet higher. But because of the slope looking down Corning Street, the only one that would see the high roof would be the people who live in this house anywhere further up if you're looking, go for it because of things they want.
And what was the roof material of it?
The asphalt. So there's a little 3D rendering, not sent into photograph. Obviously, it's sort of sitting on flat land, which doesn't exist there. But we can put together, I think, a photo of my class to give you a better picture of it in 3D in relation to its neighbors, particularly from further up the street. So again, that sense of how it'd be perceived. I think that's, that's fair, right?
Questions for Warren?
We need to put a telescope or...
Telescope.
Telescope on that. The ship and boat.
Either ship, right, coming up there a half a minute.
You said it's going to be a workshop there?
On the, on the ground floor.
What sort of workshop?
Well, the putter around it. Just not like a specific trade or business being. If you wanted to sew a piece of wood in a bookcase, that's where you could do it. What's that?
No shipbuilding going on.
I... No, it'd be a very small vessel. A lot of shipbuilding, correct?
Warren, due to my oversight, they also will require a special use permit under 125-69B and E. Anything in the overlay district, we automatically require a special use permit.
Okay.
So all you want to do is just get that to us.
Sure.
You're just going to fold right in with this and just carry it right on with it. Just like we overlook that section of the zoning law.
What about demolition?
Ooh, demolition permit. Yeah. A little bit of demolition permit.
Sorry, there, no, of course. This is the time to do all of this, I think.
I'll sound like a broken record, but any exterior lighting, if there is any proposed?
Yeah, what's any proposed, but I can make a difference.
Yeah, sure.
Imagine what that would be. Sure. Now, is the demolition permit just a standard demolition permit application? Because this is not an historic structure. It needs a certificate of appropriate management.
And one thing we need to go through that is it's not a historically contributing structure.
Right.
So basically, you could probably have the demolition permit right now, you know, take it down if you chose to.
Yeah, no, I have four.
Yeah, at this point. And especially from a second, you can do the reconstruction of the proposed structure.
Sure.
Does that all make sense to everyone? Okay. Any other questions for Warren before I launch into one more? I will pay a... Right page. The Town of Rockland Planning Board of Irritation Follows on the application of Brian and Susan Rowan for Site Plan Approval and Special Use Permit Approval. Oh, you're right, you're excellent. In the Town Code Chapter 125 in the Rockwood Pantry overlay district within the local water point of utilization area and Hudson River Historic Landmarks District. Accept the application supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board its advisors in public. Classified proposed action is type 200 seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is completed and scheduled public hearing on the 5th to May 6th at 6:50. And direct the clerk of undertaker otherwise cause noticing and posting their open courts with requirements set forth under Town Code Chapter 125. We delegate planning board members...
Alden.
We have Edna and Melanie. Do conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review of written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 118 Water Consistency Review, refer the application to the Water Control Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. In accordance with Duchess County Department of Planning, refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning with you for review and written comment. We refer the application from New York State's Historic Preservation Office for review and comment that existing consular structures reported as being constructed in 1989 was located in Hudson River Historic Landmarks District. And I think you said it all to us as a listing, listing structure.
It is a contributing structure within the district. It's not initially listed.
Okay, thank you. Authorize without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at public hearing or may arise based on both the site and field visit and referral. Preparation of a working draft and an approval resolution for the planning board's consideration on May 6th or as may be later timely. Can I hear motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. All righty. That concludes tonight's...
Bumps up.
Yeah. Is anyone else have anything they wanted to say? Can I hear motion to adjourn?
Scourge.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Hear you to stand adjourn at 7:30.